Part of at least eight bridges, fifteen other structures for slide repairs, retaining walls, things like that. We built over sixty miles of bike lane, hundreds of miles of surfacing treatments, curva realignments, and you go out there, the roads are safer. And it's it's due to all these people back here in our operations department who are, the field staff are not here, but these all people, these people here have made our roads straighter, safer, and better for the county. So I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. You don't get away without a picture. We gotta go right down front.
Yep.
Let's bring everybody from the office down, all of them.
Group picture.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you want to do it with both of them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, all right, all right.
So what's the decision now?
It's gonna be the Craig and Greg picture.
Oh, got it. Okay, okay.
We gotta take a vote, or we only get one retirement. So give us a second. We still gotta vote. If we don't vote, Greg doesn't get to retire.
He doesn't appear to be in a hurry.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, item two. Please.
Adopt and present a resolution and plaque of appreciation honoring Greg Meeks, engineering technician.
Never gonna live that.
Upon his retirement from the Department of Resource Management with over twenty-nine years of dedicated public service to Solano County. Do I have a motion?
移到
So ordered by a vote of four zero.
All right, come on down. Oh, he's already here. You're up. We made a vote. You're good. All right, I already told you all about Greg. But we're gonna do it one more time. And and all those things that I said about Craig with regard to the the work that he's done, well, this was his sidekick. He did the same thing, right? And so, thank you for keeping us safe. Thank you for making Solano County a better place. I appreciate that, sir. And with that, Greg's resolution reads, Greg Meeks began his public service career in nineteen eighty, serving in the U.S. Army and at Mare Island Naval Shipyard. Greg Meeks began working for Solano County in nineteen ninety-five as an engineering technician in the Department of Transportation within the survey unit. After exhibiting extraordinary talent, Mr. Meeks was promoted to engineering technician in nineteen ninety-eight and moved to the construction section for inspection work and road and bridge projects, drainage, and facilities. Due to his focused dedication and extensive field experience, Mr. Meeks was again promoted in two thousand two to senior engineering technician, where he became the lead inspector for several large projects, including the lead inspector on the Morrison Lane Bridge Replacement Project. Mr. Meeks continued his training and expanded his skills and abilities to include civil and structural inspections of roads and bridges, laboratory testing of soils and concrete, nuclear density testing for soil compaction, field surveying, boundary calculations, and drafting and planning review. Mr. Meeks is greatly valued, is greatly valued and will be missed by his friends and colleagues in Public Works Engineering for his integrity, breadth of knowledge, excellence, kindness, and dedication to the highest ideals of inspection, testing, and surveying.
So Greg is just a ray of light.
Almost had you.
You almost had me. But Greg's a ray of light in the office. When he's when he's in the office, he's always smiling. He's always bouncing around. He's keeping everybody happy. When he's out in the field, he's doing his job, but he's also smiling. And we get reports from the people he deals with in the public how great he is to work with and how responsive he is. We're just really gonna miss him in the department. His knowledge is off the charts, and the benefit that he's brought to the county has been immense. And so I know that he enjoys his work, and he's going to enjoy riding the bike all over the place now. There's just gonna be free reigns on his bike. So with that, I mean, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt, but I'm really gonna miss him and Craig in the office. It's gonna be a pretty sad time. So thanks.
Yeah, so I'll exercise my Irish tongue. So I roll the, I call them both Gregor and Cregor. So you just, that way you can kind of screw it up, but you know.
It's all right.
You can kind of get close enough. But, yeah. But no, you know, Greg is, what I would say is, you know, the cool thing is, you're the sum of your parts. And, you know, Greg had this really cool experience outside the county before he came here and then spent nearly three decades. But you saw radio communications and Heinz Nursery and Mare Island Shipwright. This is a generation that's that, yeah, I really hope that we can repeat those successes, where we take the folks that are younger and they go through all these experiences and they bring them to the county, and they become fantastic people and fantastic professionals. I'm, you know, one of the things about Greg, he is the kindest person in our office. As much as he's, I'll say he's a pit bull when it comes to the permit section. I'm gonna say that, you know, I'm sure some people have seen a different side of him, but he really, he's just the kind, gentle soul of the office. And, you know, as a manager, those are the things that I need to replace, too. There's professionalism, and then there's also just really good people that are center points of your office. And for Greg, you know, I haven't forgotten, I think it was maybe two thousand two, I was newer to my job. I was the grading engineer. I showed up on a complaint, met out there. All of a sudden, he pulls up in his truck. He's new to his job on the encroachment side. We sat there and I think we talked about the better parts of the county and also complained about government. But I think we struck a good friendship on that day, and it has continued for all the time you've been here. And Greg, I really appreciate everything that you've done. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Greg, Greg, once again, Greg, I want to make a quick comment. Greg's cubicle was just down from where I was down in Resource Management. And, you know, I was able to hear a lot of conversations. I kept my ears open all the time. And and Greg had a tough job because he was dealing with encroachment permits a lot. And I think any of you who have dealt with those know how those can be challenging situations. And I was always impressed with the, first of all, his knowledge. But beyond that, his tact and diplomacy in dealing with those often challenging situations was off the charts. And we definitely are gonna miss that in the county. So thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Bill. Thank you so much. Thank you all for this opportunity here today. I made a few notes. I haven't done this before. But I just want you to know that I stand here with mixed emotions and twenty-nine years of service, okay? This is not, wasn't, and is not an easy decision for, I don't think, anybody, you know, when it comes to retirement, mostly because I like my job, you know, I really do. I enjoy my work and I love everyone I work with. So, you know, the decisions, these kind of decisions in life, it wouldn't be easier next year or the year following, you know, how long, you know, I work here, it's just been, I stand here in a position of gratitude. And I really am thankful for the opportunities that were afforded me. I, you know, as stated like Craig, I came from Mare Island, and I worked there for eight years before it closed. And then I, you know, I had the opportunity, I actually had a choice to stay with the federal service or I was offered a position here at Solano County. And I took the position here at Solano County. And it wasn't an easy transition, you know, from one to the other, I gotta say. I started on the survey crew and we were on a three-bridge project that some of you might familiar with, on Pleasant Valley Road and Foothill Bridges. And we, I started this time of year on the survey crew, and needless to say, you know, it wasn't easy. It was sometimes in excess of a hundred degrees out there. And I thought, oh, what did I get myself into for, you know? And I still think to this day, I'm the only one that got sprayed by a skunk on the survey crew to this day, within my first six months. And I can assure you, what you smell on the road in your cars passing by a skunk is nothing compared, okay? It took a little while for that stench to dissipate, but, you know, I gotta say, moving on to the construction crew and all the projects we've been involved with, somebody asked me earlier, wow, twenty-nine years. Man, that's quite a while. It just doesn't seem that it's been like twenty-nine years. It really doesn't. I, you know, all the different projects and all the different people that I've met on the job, it's just new every day. And it seems like the learning experiences that I've had, each one, even when it's difficult, and it was difficult at times throughout my career, engineering was rather new to me. And I, just a side note, a friend of mine showed me a book one time, or recommended a book for me, A Road Less Traveled. And the very first line in the first chapter is, "Life is difficult." And I remember, you know, thinking about that. It also goes the other way. Let's not forget that. But, you know, the problem wasn't, isn't so much that life is difficult sometimes, it's that I don't think it should be. And what I learned was each challenge that I had throughout the county and in my career here has been a growing and learning experience. In the rearview mirror, I appreciate it all. And I just, as Craig emphasized, I couldn't have done it without a beautiful work environment supplied by the policies here at the county. Bill mentioned, I know Bill talked a little bit when he was our manager about the Bike to Work Week, all the beautiful programs that are afforded us. The, you know, I went to school part of my, in the beginning of my career, when I joined the survey crew, I took AutoCAD Drafting, I took a survey class, and all those things were supported by the county. Thank you. And not only that, I got tuition reimbursement for it. It's, you know, so, I mean, I always tell people to take advantage of these things that are offered to us here at the county. And the support of all my coworkers, it's just been a wonderful experience. So as I said earlier, the only position I really have here is one of gratitude. And as I move into retirement, I know that I'm going to take those things with me, you know, all the memories and the learning experiences. So they'll always be with me. I won't lose them. And I just want to say that also, in the last few months, I know I've been coming to this moment, so I've been training a few of our newer employees. And I can tell you, I'm confident that the teamwork that they have together and the knowledge that they've accumulated, you know, it's gonna be a wonderful future for them. And I wish everyone the best of luck in all their future endeavors. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
So before, I just want to touch on what James said earlier. There's another person retiring, but they chose not to come before the board. That's Lina Watley, who is retiring after thirty-one years of service. So there goes the hundred years out the door. So thank you all.
Nobody any taller than me back there. Nobody any taller than us.
Craig's gonna block me.
There we go.
You're gonna block it.
I think y'all might even got probation beat. I don't know. Please tell me I got him right.
I know Craig's blocking.
I don't know.
Goodness gracious. We'll find out in just a second. There you go. Oh, goodness. Where am I at here? Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Madam Clerk, we're ready for the next one. Ma'am, please.
Adopt and present a resolution designating the month of July twenty twenty-four as Park and Recreation Month and July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four as Park and Recreation Professionals' Day, Professionals' Day in Solano County. Do I have a motion? Second. So ordered by a vote of four zero.
Oh, rub it in. Rub it in.
Can rise. Good morning, everybody. I'm really excited to see all the people here that we don't usually see on our Board of Supervisors meetings. And I have a question for all of you. By the name, I'm Supervisor Erin Hanigan. I represent most of the city of Vallejo. This is my eleventh and a half year serving in this position. How many of you been to a city council meeting? Okay. How many of you been to a county supervisor meeting, county meeting? Just a few of you. Well, I want to welcome you who have not been to a meeting like this before. This is democracy in action. This is where the work happens. This is where policy is made. And this is obviously where we honor those who have worked for our county for many years and when they retire. I know that's a far goal for all of you, but you want to think about that, retirement and making sure you retire well. So with that, I'm going to start on the resolution of the Solano County Board of Supervisors designating July twenty twenty-four as Park and Recreation Month in Solano County and recognizing July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four as Park and Recreation Professionals' Day. This is an important resolution for me. I've worked for many years on accessing, making parks in our community here in Solano County accessible to all citizens, regardless of your ability to move, regardless of access in terms of distance. We want to make parks available to everybody. They're good for your mind, they're good for your body, they're good for your soul. So whereas, public agencies throughout the nation have designated July as Park and Recreation Month since nineteen eighty-five and July nineteenth as Park and Recreation Professionals' Day. Solano County, through its Department of Resource Management Parks and Recreation Division, operates four parks, Lake Solano County Park, Sandy Beach County Park, Beldon's Landing Water Access Facility, and Lynch Canyon Open Space Park, formerly known as our Solano County Parks. In twenty twenty-one, Supervisor Vasquez and I worked on AB eight ninety-eight, which was passed by the state legislature, so that Solano County can create a Parks District and actually have enough money in our coffers to be able to maintain our parks and to create more parks. And so we're very proud of that legislation, and we're hoping someday soon we can put it into practice. But our parks are essential to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, enhancing the skill, excuse me, the health and well-being of all residents and visitors, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And residents value their parks for access to outdoor spaces for children and adults to play, exercise, and participate in lifelong learning. Parks provide access to the serenity and inspiration of nature, improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, produce habitat for wildlife, and preserve and protect the historic, natural, and cultural resources in our community. The Solano County Board of Supervisors values the essential services that park and recreation professionals and volunteers perform to provide recreational and developmental enrichment for our children, youth, adults, and older adults, and to ensure our parks and recreational spaces are clean, safe, inclusive, welcoming, and ready to use. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Solano County Board of Supervisors designates the month of July twenty twenty-four as Parks and Recreation Month in Solano County and July nineteenth as Park and Recreation Professionals' Day. And we urge all residents to enjoy the social, physical, mental, environmental, and community benefits derived from our Solano County parks. Signed by our Chair Mitch Mashburn. And I have some experts behind me, as you can tell, who are gonna talk at length and provide some information about the parks here in Solano County.
Thank you, Supervisor Hanigan. I'm very proud of our park system. It's a wonderful place. If you've not been, please go. Since COVID, we have been breaking records on attendance. So the public really loves to come out to the parks. And it wouldn't happen without the people who stand behind me. I go to the park, I enjoy going to the park. And it's because of Chris and his team that they're clean, safe, and wonderful places to be. And you get a broad range of experiences from Lake Solano, you get the water, you get Sandy Beach, and you go get out into the marsh and you see things that you probably have not seen in the county, especially if you live in a city. So I encourage everyone to get out. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Chris so he can talk a bit more.
Thank you. Chris Drake, Parks Services Manager for Solano County. And I have like a really long speech, but I didn't bring the presentation with all the slides, so I'll just keep it super short for everybody. I am just the head of the big machine that's behind me. And to pull in the two people that we do have on duty today to come in is not something I would normally do. But it's important to make certain that the folks behind me get the recognition and get the applause that they deserve. Without their hard-won efforts, without their passion, dedication, devotion to making certain that the parks are safe, that the people that come out to the parks have wonderful opportunities to grow, explore, learn new things, or just do the things that they always do. And being able to access that is incredibly important. And they are the ones that do it. This is a small piece of our very small team, but it is who we have that can bring us a little bit of a picture of what your Parks Team looks like. So thank you very much for acknowledging your Parks Team. They are pretty swell.
I promised I wouldn't embarrass you.
Oh, that's me.
Chair, if I could just make a few comments.
Sir, yes, sir.
You know, Erin said something to all of you out there, how many of you have been to city council meetings, how many have been to board supervisor meetings, and talked about the democratic process and what a board supervisors does, creates policies and help. And she talked about the work that we did getting legislation to be able to create a park district. But it goes farther back than that. In sixty-seven, the Board of Supervisors commissioned a report to look at Parks and Recreation in Solano County. They identified a hundred and forty-three thousand acres, they thought, potentially could be open space, could be private marinas, public marinas. And what I'm saying is that we up here simply build on what others have done before, and others will build on what we've done. So that whole process may take a long time, but it's meant to serve the public. And some days, there may be a park district, and there may be a park tax that allows us to live out that dream that was developed in the late sixties. They also, in sixty-eight, put a park tax. There's a small, everybody in the county pays a little bit of their property tax to help fund the park system we have today. But that's what the process is about. It's not fast and it's not easy. But, but those of us that hold these seats temporarily try to do the best we can so that the next group can build on that. Anyway, thank you, Erin, for sparking that little thought in my head again.
All right, Madam Clerk, item four, please.
Receive a presentation from the public defender on the selection of Kevin Tulabut as Employee of the Month for July twenty twenty-four.
Good morning. Elena D'Agostino, Public Defender. It is, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to be here to talk.
Elena, step up to the mic.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
How's that?
Now all of Internet land can hear you.
Yes. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to recognize Kevin Tulabut, who is our office coordinator. Kevin joined the office in October of twenty twenty-two, and, I mean, he keeps the office running. He does a little of everything, primarily HR. And without him, you know, I don't know how we would take care of all the people in the department. So I tried to figure out how to quantify what Kevin has been working on. And, you know, we've had a lot of vacancies and turnover in that period of time. I counted, we have done two hundred and forty-three interviews for this department of a hundred people since he started. And Kevin has been responsible for contacting the candidates, scheduling, coordinating with the panels, bringing people in, background check, all of that. And he has done it, he has made it organized. He is so polite and considerate and informative to the candidates. He presents a great presentation for our department with people who are interviewing to you with our office. And that's not all. Kevin has, does all kinds of operation stuff. And in the last three or four months, we haven't had a staff analyst. It's been a vacant position. And he has really stepped up and figured out how to really help with some of those duties that are outside of my scope or capability. And it has been an enormous help to the department. So thank you, Kevin, for helping us take care of all the people that work for the public defender.
Thank you so much, Elena. Just wanted to take a moment to share my gratitude. So they say it's rare to meet your hero. Well, lucky for the Office of the Public Defender, they met me in October of twenty twenty-two. All jokes aside, I am truly honored to accept the Employee of the Month award. This recognition means a lot to me, and I'm grateful for the support and encouragement from my wife, colleagues, supervisors, and the management team. Working in the Public Defender's Office, we face many challenges, but it's a dedication and teamwork that make our work impactful and meaningful. Whether I'm juggling multiple spreadsheets or the occasional chasing down of an attorney to submit their time card, I'm proud to be a part of such a committed team that tirelessly advocates for justice and fairness for our community. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors for the recognition, and a special thanks to everyone I am privileged to partner with. I also want to express my appreciation to those in other departments. I deeply value our relationships. To the Auditor Controller, Human Resources, General Services, DOIT, and my first department, Employment and Eligibility at HNSS, your companionship, continued support, and collaboration have been instrumental. To Elena, the Chiefs, PD Ops, and entire Office of the Public Defender, I look forward to continuing our important work together. Thank you.
Come on down.
Come on down. We got a picture. Yeah, we have pictures. Bring everybody down here. Come on, y'all. Don't be bashful now. Yeah, yeah, you know. You know, you get to take a picture with your hero.
He's sending autographs.
Congratulations.
All right, congratulations. All right, that brings us to items from the public. I do have a couple of speaker cards here. Do we have anybody online, ma'am? No callers? Oh, that's right. I love that. Yeah. With that, then, first up, I have mindful. Did I get that right? Yes, ma'am. Now, I'm not the one to gossip, and you ain't heard it from me, but there is a facility that is available, is ready for move-in, 52 single, 104 double. It has a community space for a wonderful garden where they can learn to garden. It has a wonderful dining facility, they can learn how to cook, be a family, and most of all, they can get support and stability. So this morning, I am here asking if this Rescue Plan Service Funding can please go to house some of these homeless people that has a mental illness. Let's get her done. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, next up is Mr. Gwen.
Good morning, once again. Last night, I sent you guys a link to a video that Carl DiMaio, who's Head of Reform California, and it had some ideas I think you guys really need to consider to make California great again like it used to be instead of constantly going in this direction. And it's really critical what changes happen in a positive direction, because if we keep going the way we're going, it's not going to be a pretty future. And it's still not too late to do something, but pretty soon, it'll be too late. And once it's too late, it's not going to be easy to recover. There's too much money being spent by the state, and that deprives you guys of money that you need. We got the train to nowhere, that billions of dollars are spent, and it's not going to come to fruition. And there's lots of other projects like that. And if the money was at a local level and not swatted on big projects that aren't going to work, we'd be a lot better off. California used to have a lot less money than it has now, and it did a lot more than it's doing now. And the idea that you're going to have people that are homeless in droves that don't want to get a job, it's not going to be a viable solution. Eventually, it's going to go belly up, because you can't have people that have lots of wants and don't do anything to improve their situation. And I dare say that so far, the efforts made to change the homeless haven't been going in the right direction. It's getting a lot worse. Look at San Francisco, look at Oakland, look at Los Angeles. Big companies and other businesses are shutting down left and right. And once they're down, there's not replacements very soon. And if you don't have income coming in, then lots of people get in a lot worse shape. So really, really hope you guys can do your part. I recognize there are lots of different counties, 58 in California, so you've got to have them all on board to really make some changes. But at least the efforts need to be started to go back in the right direction, and I hope you guys will follow that path. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George. Let me wait just a second. That moves us to approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda, sir?
Mr. Chairman, there are no changes recommended.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
You could.
All right, with that, we're moving to the consent calendar, and...
Sorted by the vote of 4-0.
Thank you. Okay, now with this, we're moving to the consent calendar. Is there any members of the board who would like to pull anything from consent? No, seen none. All right, then with that, I have two cards on consent items for public comment. The first is Mr. Gwen on item 16.
Electric vehicles. There's nothing wrong with having electric vehicles as part of the infrastructure, but to get rid of gasoline cars and just have electric cars is not going to work. First place, you don't have enough stations to keep everybody going at this point. It's going to be a long time before you do. Electric vehicles use rare earths that come from other parts of the world like China, and they're not exactly our friends at this point. And we have to pay through the nose even when we could get some of the materials. And if you put all your eggs in one basket, it makes it pretty hard if things don't go the way they're supposed to. You need diversity in vehicles, and also, you need to have people still have their own vehicles, because if there's ever nuclear warfare, if you have to depend on public transportation to get away from an area that's going to be bombed, I think you're going to be up the creek. Besides that, it's nice to be independent. If you're not independent, you're really at risk for a lot of bad things to happen to you. But if you're independent, then you can do things that need to be done to keep on going and maybe come up with even better things. So I really hope you guys don't go along with the governor's plan to have everybody in an electric vehicle. It's just not going to work the way it's being promoted, and it's going to lead to people having to pay a lot more money for things that they could get a lot cheaper. Plus, also, they want to tax the people that have gasoline cars, extra road tax, because they, that and the electric people too, so that they can pay for the infrastructure, because gas tax has been paying for a lot of the infrastructure, the roads and other things that go with getting from point A to point B. And nobody thought about that when they started making the change, and I think it's getting a little too, a little too late. And it needs to be thought about before people proceed. I have nothing wrong with people buying what they want to, but they shouldn't be forced to. Plus, also, the government even wants to keep track of where you're going, and that's none of the public's, that's none of the government's business. People are supposed to be able to have privacy, and if the government knows every place you're going, that's not a good thing. That's when you have a totalitarian state. We sure don't need that. Thank you very much.
All right, don't run off, George. You're the only other public comment I have on consent for the second item, which is number 33.
Okay, let me turn to that. Still getting there, one more. Oh, okay. $811,295 is an awful lot of money to write off. It's going to really be bad if you guys do that and there's nothing else you could do. I would think that there's got to be something you could do. That's a lot of money to lose. And maybe you want to think about that again before you do it and give it one more effort, because once the money's gone, it's gone, it doesn't come back. I understand that if you're not going to be able to get anything, then it does cost money to try to proceed, but there's got to be something there that you could give a few more bucks maybe without spending that kind of money. Thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
I think that's a fair question. You know, most of us understand up here, but maybe the public not so much, the process that we went through to reach this point.
Yeah, I mean, basically, first of all, emphasize it's over a 12-year period, right? So beyond that, you know, we've gone through collection processes and everything else trying to collect these over that period of time. This is where we're at today. It's really, at this point...
Just bad debt.
It's bad debt, and the auditor's office needs to address that, so this is why we're bringing this forward today.
Okay, George?
All right, so before I ask for a vote on consent, I don't want to pull the item, but I do want to comment on an item. I'm going to get in trouble for this, because this wasn't really expected. But could I ask Ms. Gutierrez to come down to the podium? And I'm going to call her boss up here, too, because I see him in the audience. He's probably here for the 2 o'clock, but if I could get the undersheriff and Lisa to come down as well?
Oh, you are so good. See, she likes to come down.
I know, this is going to hurt on more than one level. So you guys don't know this, most of you probably don't. Some of you do if you work here in the county. But Renee is retiring today. She's item number 30 on our agenda, and I wanted to speak to that. She just wanted it to go on consent, because she didn't want to make a big to-do about it, but...
That'll teach her.
What's that?
It's a that'll teacher.
Right? You know what I'm saying? I don't let stuff fly. And so the reason that I wanted to call her down here is because I think that she deserves a special kind of recognition. And after all the years of service that she's given to the county, she's our Animal Care Services Manager. She runs our shelter for our animals in Solano County. And I'm going to take everybody here in the Wayback Machine, and most folks in this room probably don't even know what that means, but it was from a cartoon way back in the day. We're going to go in a time machine and go back in time in our county. And our shelter, our animal shelter here, back in the 80s when I started working here, was not a no-kill shelter. That shelter, we're still not, but that shelter back then, probably 25% of the animals that went in that shelter got adopted. The rest of the animals never made it out. It was a very sad place. It was very hard back then. And you fast forward to today, when more than 80% of the animals that go into the shelter, they find a home, they find their forever home, they find their people. And a huge part of that is because of Renee, and because of what she's done and the policies that she's made, and the devotion to raising money and doing the work and getting it done. All of those things she did. And this is hard for me, because we, my family is really involved at the shelter, and we do a lot, so I get to see a lot. And when you've been there and you've seen it, and you've seen that level of commitment, we have managers all over the county who run a division, or they run an agency. Renee owns that, she works it, from stepping into a kennel and cleaning it out, and shoveling it out, and washing it out, to putting on her scrubs and doing the surgeries so that some of those animals who wouldn't have made it, make it and get out, or are adoptable at the end of the process. She does all that still to this day, in addition to running that department and raising all those extra funds and all that extra money to help those animals get adopted, to have those special days when people can come and find their furry friend and not have to pay a bunch of money to do it, because we have folks in our county who maybe can't afford it, maybe they're seniors on a fixed income, and she's made it possible for them to also have that support and have that pet. And so I share all that with you to recognize you for all you have done, for those, and I'm going to call them citizens in our county, little furry ones, who don't have anybody to speak for them, except you and your staff, and all that you've done for them. And so I want to read this, and thank you, Alicia, for reading my mind and knowing I was going to do this. It's only one, I got one, I can't mess this up, I don't think. So Renee Gutierrez began her career with the Solano County Department of General Services as an Animal Care Specialist Supervisor, Extra Help, on August 16, 2004, and transitioned to full-time on March 28, 2005. The position was reclassified to Animal Care Supervisor and Veterinary Technician in 2006. The animal control function moved from General Services to the Sheriff's Office. On June 30, 2019, Renee was promoted to the Animal Care Manager, where she served until her retirement. Renee worked for multiple Solano County Departments while caring for the animals of Solano County during her 19-year career, including the Department of General Services and the Sheriff. Ms. Gutierrez possessed exceptional skills as a registered veterinary technician, excellent customer service skills, and used these skills along with her vast historical knowledge of the Solano County Animal Care to educate staff, to inform the Board of Supervisors, and to help the community gain a better understanding of the services Solano County provides to both the residents and the animals. As the Animal Care Manager, Ms. Gutierrez could often still be found cleaning the office, cleaning kennels, helping with surgeries. She also researched and applied for and was awarded several hundred thousand dollars in grants funds for animal care services to enhance the community engagement, expand spay and neuter services, and the foster program. Ms. Gutierrez initiated agreements with the Best Friends Animal Society and the UC Davis Corret Shelter Medicine Program to evaluate and improve animal care services utilizing industry's best practices and to improve outcomes for animals under her care, including realizing the live release rate of 88% in fiscal year 2021, the highest live release rate at animal care ever recorded in our county. Ms. Gutierrez was a respected and valued member of the Sheriff's Office and will be greatly missed by her friends and coworkers. She retires on July 5 after over 19 years of dedicated service to Solano County, and I want to say thank you. And I know you probably didn't have a speech, but I'm going to ask your bosses if they'd like to come up and...
Oh, yes.
Or the boss's boss.
Brad Dewall, undersheriff. So it might be premature, because we were trying to get Renee to stay, and we have her on the spot. Is it, do you want to stay, Renee? Okay, okay, okay. But no, Renee, it's been a pleasure getting to know you all these years. You and your team have a heart of gold, and you're always looking for innovative ideas and partnerships of getting the animals homes and care, and you have a true passion for the job. So you make us look good, you get all the animals homes, and I know that there's a lot of passion in the community surrounding all the animals, yet you work through it, you create those networks, partnerships, to get them where they need to be. And I think for today, we'll challenge all of you, let's have a clearing of the animal shelter and adapt some animals. Let's turn this into a positive experience. But I just want to thank you, Renee, you're an amazing person. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Doni, Director of Admin Services at the Sheriff's Office, and I've had the pleasure of, sorry, of being the analyst working with Renee and then being the director overseeing the shelter, and just, I just want to thank you, Renee. I just want to thank you for, I could always be sure that things were running smoothly, procedures were being followed, and the animals were getting taken care of. So it's been an honor, and I know we'll stay in touch. Thank you.
No pressure.
No pressure.
Winkie.
So yes, Supervisor Mashburn is in trouble, because I was trying to just go away very quietly. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, to all the county personnel that I have worked with over the 20 years of my career here. I came to Solano County as a single mother raising three children. Those three children now have graduated from high school, graduated from college. They've become three outstanding men. My firstborn is a lawyer. One of my twins works for the Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer. My third son is a maintenance supervisor. Don't tell anybody, but he is currently my favorite son, because he gave me three, two, I'm sorry, two beautiful grandsons, Rogan and JoJo, and they are the reason I am retiring, because I do want to spend more time with them. I don't want to miss a moment of their life, and I do want to help out.
So yes, Supervisor Mashburn is in trouble because I was trying to just go away very quietly. So first of all, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Supervisors, to all the county personnel that I have worked with over the 20 years of my career here. I came to Solano County as a single mother raising three children. Those three children now have graduated from high school, graduated from college. They've become three outstanding men. My firstborn is a lawyer. One of my twins works for the Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer. My third son is a maintenance supervisor. Don't tell anybody, but he is currently my favorite son because he gave me three, two, I'm sorry, two beautiful grandsons, Rogan and JoJo. And they are the reason I am retiring because I do want to spend more time with them. I don't want to miss a moment of their life. And I do want to help out with anything that I can with them, enjoy all those beautiful memories with them because it goes by so fast. It is bittersweet because I do love my career. I do love the animal shelter. I do love being a Sheriff's Office employee. The support that we have received over the years is phenomenal. We really went from that dog pound mentality and stigma to a resource hub that we are today, which I'm very proud of. I have a wonderful team. I could not do it without them. And I'm just proud of all the accomplishments that we've been able to do over the years. So all my gratitude goes to the county and to my team in animal care for everything that they've given me over the years. So thank you.
I'd like to say a few things if I could. Well, several years ago, we had a member of our community who would come to our meetings on a regular basis, on a regular basis, just about every Tuesday. Imagine that showing up here at 9:00 AM almost every Tuesday, and would speak publicly. They were very passionate about the community cats throughout Solano County. And community, you can define that as feral cats. They were typically in colonies that were fed by feeders, as we call them. But I connected with her and learned a lot about the nonprofit world and the work that goes on in rescuing or trapping community cats and getting them spayed and neutered in a low-cost way. We're talking nonprofits. They don't have a lot of money. And one of the things we do at the shelter is we provide low-cost spay and neuter programs. But we've had problems over the years hanging on to our veterinarians. They're in hot demand all over the country and certainly here in Solano County. But I really want to thank Renee for stepping up. When I convened a meeting with all the community cat nonprofit groups to have a conversation around how can we all do better in serving our community cats, because everybody loves them. And to make sure that, one, they were getting the services that they needed, and potentially, you know, adoptions was really important. But Renee, you stepped up. You took the criticism. You actually created solutions and worked well with these nonprofits. And I want to thank you for that. I want to thank you for embracing the moment. I know it doesn't seem like a big deal, but when you have people in our audience, not you all, but the ones that come on a regular basis and complain about things, and maybe for the lack of things that we should be doing that we aren't, and not knowing all the inner workings of the whys and the wheres of why we're where we are, you know, it's important and it's kind of scary. But I really want to thank you, Renee, for standing up, for finding solutions, for taking care of not only those in your shelter, but the community cats that people so love in their neighborhoods, and for really being just a great person. And I wish you all the best in your retirement and spending time with your grands and watching them grow every moment. So thank you so much for all of your efforts.
I'll move consent.
So ordered by a vote of 4-0.
All right, that brings us to our regular calendar. And Madam Clerk, that would be item 37.
Conduct the quarterly meeting of the East Vallejo Fire Protection District Board of Directors.
I know. I saw some stars and bars. Oh, there they are. All right.
Good morning, Chair Mashburn, members of the board. Nancy Nelson, Senior Management Analyst with the County Administrator's Office. And I'm here to introduce Deputy Chief Arthur Gonzalez with the Vallejo Fire Department.
Good morning, Chairman. Thank you, Supervisors. Arthur Gonzalez, Vallejo Fire Department Deputy Chief. I'm here to report the East Vallejo Fire Protection District area responses for the fourth quarter of 2324. In that time period, we had 144 total calls for service. 125 of those calls were EMS medical related. 19 of them were various types of fire calls. Zero business license applications, two new development reviews for two single-family dwellings, one on Bush and one on Thomas. Zero fire investigations and zero weed abatement complaints. The Vallejo Fire Department's primary mission is to safely protect the lives and property of our citizens and the residents of the East Vallejo Fire Protection District. We value customer service as the foundation of our organization, and we thank you for allowing us to serve your district.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Would you repeat what the zero was again?
We had zero business license applications.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? I have no cards for comment, so.
It's just to receive an update.
It's just to receive an update, and I appreciate that. And thank you, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, the weed abatement thing is great.
Yeah.
All right, Madam Clerk, that brings us to item 38.
Receive a report on the Solano County 2023 Index of Economic and Community Progress.
Morning, Doc.
Morning.
Okay. Good morning, Board. Matthew Davis, Principal Management Analyst with the County Administrator's Office. It's my pleasure today to welcome Dr. Eiler, founder and president of Economic Forensic and Analytics and Professor of Economics at Sonoma State University. Dr. Eiler will present to us the 2023 Solano County Index of Economic and Community Progress, marking the 15th annual presentation of this index. The index, which can also be found on the county's website, provides an objective analysis of key indicators shaping our local economy in Solano County. So Dr. Eiler will now lead us through the presentation.
Thank you, Matthew, and thank you, Board, for having me today. Again, thank you for letting me do this work. And I think this is actually the 12th year in a row that I've done it. It used to be done internally by staff, so thank you so much for doing that. And also, congratulations for continuing this work just to maybe better understand what's been going on in the economy. What I want to do is I want to start with an overview. So between the last time I saw you and this time, inflation has gotten slower. If you think about the macro overview, wages have started to catch up a little bit in terms of real wages, but not a lot. So what we're seeing, which is a classic outcome in macroeconomics, when you have relatively quick inflation, is that wages begin to catch up, and then they start to slow down as inflation slows down, because usually inflation is going to slow down because the pinch of inflation is starting to slow down consumption, and that slows down hiring. So wages kind of follow a little bit and then flatten out. And we're in that sort of middle frictional ground, if you want to put it that way, right now. The labor force has crept up, which is good. Over the last few years, especially in post-COVID era, we saw labor force sag a little bit. Some of that was population change driven. We've seen the labor force reemerge. That also helps our local employers hire. It does slow down wage growth. And then again, that juxtaposition of how it helps employers versus employees is a classic issue in terms of creeping forward in a slower growth economy. But unemployment has crept up. So we've seen a little bit less hiring, specifically of Solano County residents, but that's not unique to Solano County. We're seeing that across California. In fact, California has kind of a weird anomaly right now where if you're a resident of California, it's been harder to find a job than those that have been hired by California-based employers, meaning that California-based employers have primarily looked outside California for hiring based on remote work. So that's been a slight change. And Solano County has seen some of that, but not as much as the state overall. The population did increase, which was great to see. And in fact, of the nine counties that are counted in the Bay Area, Solano County was one of the very few of those nine that actually saw a population increase. So especially in the North Bay, Napa, Sonoma, and Marin Counties both continue to have population decreases, or all three do. The macro forecast is relatively slower than what we saw maybe six months ago, but not by much. In fact, the last two quarters of 2023 surprised most macroeconomists in terms of how robust the growth was. And that has kept interest rates from going down to a certain extent in that with continued growth and continued sort of slow movement of inflation, the idea of lowering interest rates and potentially juicing growth a little bit at the cost of higher inflation has not quite happened yet. And I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end. As we go forward toward 2030, there's been a continued amount of uncertainty out there in terms of geopolitical issues. I'll talk a little bit about that at the end, too. We have a lot of stuff happening in, at the governmental level federally, at the state level, the county level, the city level, you name it. It's been quite a year and it will be quite a year in terms of what goes forward. Now, the part of that is going to be how much that leads to business investment slowing down, the nature of hiring slowing down. Based on that uncertainty, we will see. Farmers slipped a little bit last year, but some of that sort of nuance in terms of inflation settling down and commodities prices settling down a little bit. But I'll talk later about farmers. And we're basically at about the same agricultural level we were about eight or nine years ago. So farmers have, in terms of the aggregate, have not really gained that much over the last decade, but still remain a force in Solano County and need to be supported. And then from an economic development standpoint, working with Solano EDC, thinking about economic diversity and the expansion of industry mix and just general jobs, we'll talk a little bit about that as we go forward. But that's basically the plan toward 2030 is to continue to look at economic diversity and growth more on the manufacturing and what we think of as sort of goods-producing side of the economy, where services would be naturally pulled behind that. If we look at the evolution of residents of Solano County and what's been happening over the last 14 years or so, this is a look, and you can see that the data are from January 10 forward on a seasonally adjusted basis. These are the number of people that live in Solano County that have a job. So we had a peak right after December 2019, and then we saw the sharp cut. And you can see that evolution from January 2010 forward, the sort of nice slope coming out of the Great Recession, the peak, the drop into the pandemic, and then the slow evolution back up. So as of the January 2024 data, we saw it creep back up over that red dotted line, which means in seasonally adjusted terms, those that live in Solano County have basically recovered in the aggregate, which is great. That's also a trend that's been bucked against the other North Bay counties, specifically Marin, Sonoma, and Napa. Those counties have not yet recovered their residential employment level. Now, some of that's because their residential mix has changed more toward a population that is not necessarily looking for work and has come in and actually just to retire. So there's that issue, too. But some of those data are still emerging. Hopefully in the next couple of years, if you continue to have me do this work, I'll have more data on that as they come out. But in general, the point is that we think that that coming back is good in terms of suggesting that residents are getting a job. How the labor force is expanding, expanding a little bit faster than jobs, which means unemployment has crept up a little bit. But it is good to see that this has crept back over and we have, quote unquote, recovered and are now in expansion mode. The next look is looking at non-farm employment. So just as a reminder, there's a weird juxtaposition in the labor data where when you hear about the unemployment rate, that's about people that live in Solano County, not people who work in Solano County. When you hear about non-farm employment like this, this is how county-based employers hire. So that has not quite gotten back by the end of 2023 to where it was at the end of 2019. It's just underneath. Those two tend to follow each other, especially if you draw workers from the local residence pool. But Solano County has a long history of having people live here, commute out for work, and having to import some part of its workforce. And so there is that mix, too. But they tend to follow each other pretty closely. The point is, this has also continued to grow and, in essence, is shaped by the economic development that takes place and the jobs mix that's out there. So thinking toward 2030, as I said before, Solano EDC has a plan. It's now in Phase 3, which is known as moving Solano forward. And that plan has finally shaped out the direction that industry mix should go with the idea that as more workers are in those manufacturing-style jobs, specifically, that'll grow other jobs through the sort of lift of all boats with higher wages and higher median household incomes. That's the belief. Now, at a deeper level, though, and it starts to show its face in terms of the details here, this is the change in jobs from 2019 to 2023, looking from December to December. So thinking year-end 2019, right before the pandemic, and year-end 2023, the last sort of annualized data we have based on last year ending. If you look, you can see that these blue columns suggest the growth in certain industries that's happened since the pandemic really hit, and then others that have not quite yet recovered. So while we have aggregate recovery, generally speaking, we do not necessarily have every industry recovered yet. In specific, farming, construction, information, which is tech, still remain below where we were before the pandemic. And if you add, if you look at what's happened in just the last year, the last year, if you look at the far right-hand side, most of the growth, which has taken place both from the pandemic time and also just in the last year, has been in services. And this is also not unique to Solano County. If you look across California, services growth has really been the burgeoning growth area in the last year. The trick is trying to get the left-hand side to continue to rise up or at least clean up the losses we saw in the pandemic. Farming is actually down again in terms of looking back one year and has exacerbated a little bit the blue column. In general, those are not terrible negative numbers. And part of the construction number is because we've seen a slowdown in building over the last year and maybe a little bit of overhiring coming out of the pandemic. But you can see the blue column, at least for Solano County, is also negative, suggesting that the entire post-pandemic time, we haven't seen much jobs recovery. It's in those left-hand side areas where most of the larger multiplicative aspects of economic development take place rather than in services. But like I said, it's also not unique. If you look across the Bay Area, most of the growth of the last year has been in services industries, not in agriculture, construction, and manufacturing. But those areas are generally the focus of how we move forward from an economic development standpoint. So with the plan emerging, we should see more jobs coming for farming, construction, and manufacturing if those plans come to fruition.
So.
Oh, please, I'm sorry.
Yes. But when you talk about farming, as technology starts to advance in agriculture, there's less and less. And the farming community I talked to are always looking for that piece of machinery or the technology that allows them not to have one more person on the job.
Correct. And you should expect that to continue. So if you look at at least some of the emerging studies about artificial intelligence and its linkages to labor markets, agriculture is one of those industries that tends to have the larger, a marginally larger threat than other industries in terms of having labor replaced by AI.
Yeah, last Friday, one of the young farmers had it on his phone. He irrigates 6,000 acres, all on his phone. He doesn't need to have somebody go out there and start it up or move it or anything else. It's just right here.
Yeah. And think of like a Roomba vacuum cleaner, right? At some point, you'll be able to control a tractor in the field basically from a remote or have your property mapped in such a way that the tractor will know where to go autonomously. That's coming. And it's going to expand, yeah. I mean, the point behind that is how much resistance there is, especially in agricultural industries where hand harvesting is still seen as a premium based on what it does, that also will get improved over time. So anyway, we could have done the whole time today on the potential problems in labor markets with respect to artificial intelligence and other technological movements forward. But with that in mind, I think agriculture is one of those that has probably marginally more threat to it than other industries in the front end.
Yeah, but so on the other side of that, I think we're going to see more and more greenhouses here. Take Gotham Greens, where you can, in a 100,000 square foot building, you can grow as much as 100 acres of product, 95% less water. Have 50 employees. You're going to see that move more and more. Those leafy greens, you know, that haven't been grown in Solano County, I think are continuing to be. Yet, the labor market, they're going to need those people to harvest it, but they're all within a climate-controlled building.
Yeah. And so we're going to see different technologies and different business models emerge, depending on what you see as the return to having workers in that space rather than having technology basically do a lot of that work for you. It'll be intriguing to watch how that moves forward, especially because the other thing you have to remember is as wages have gone up, employers, regardless of the industry, are going to look at ways of solving problems in terms of costs with technology. It's a, you know, centuries-old issue in terms of economic development. So this is not new. It's just the pace of it seems very quick, which is classic because as technology has gotten better, the pace of adoption and the want to adopt, especially if cost-cutting comes with it, is going to also speed up.
Thank you.
Of course.
So when it comes to construction, is it because of the interest rate? Is it because we don't have folks who understand how to put together electricity? I'm just trying to figure out, or lack of what? Or is it just something that eventually will get better?
Sure. So in construction, it's been kind of a mystery. If you think about how hard it is to find a contractor, why you wouldn't see demand sort of drive more. And I think part of it is because we have a smaller population to draw from in the first place. That population's going to have fewer skilled workers in it by definition, by the nature of how you've seen people move around. Especially if you look at how people may have moved from here, and we've seen some of this emerge in the data, toward places where construction was e-. data, toward places where construction was even hotter than it was here for the first two years coming out of the pandemic, places like Phoenix, Charlotte, Austin, where you're basically making two moves at once. You're going to a place that's a lower cost of living and the demand for your services is higher. So some of that sort of revisited where we were coming out of the Great Recession in terms of the lack of availability of contractors and construction workers, and some of that is just simply a sort of a reorganization of that labor pool. The key is how long it persists. And we, and I've been talking for years that we had to also expect a generational turnover, especially in general contractors with respect to if you were 50 years old in 2010 and going, wow, I don't know what I'm going to do next, now you're 65. And if you rode the wave of the 2010s, you might now be finally retiring, but did we have enough people coming in the wake of that to replace those folks leaving? And what does that leave us with in terms of the total labor pool in construction that's starting to emerge?
So would the thought be in terms of economic growth that we look into having more trade schools and stuff like that? I mean, I'm, maybe that's what you're going to talk about at the end, but that's my thought in terms of different things that we could advance because as much as we want to think about AI, I don't see a robot on top of my roof, but maybe that might happen.
It is coming. But, and again, we could have done the whole day on that and we're, and I'm, you know, I'd love to talk about that, but I don't want to stray too far from the script here. You should expect that, but places like Solano Community College are great bastions of being able to provide trained personnel, and you want to continue to build those relationships and make sure that the community college is supported. And that's where you would find people who would get attracted to wanting to build and be outside. We will see how it goes.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, Doc, that's all we have for questions at the moment.
Okay. So as a good segue, the next topic is advanced manufacturing. So Solano EDC asked me to add this to this year's index. Solano County's done a really good job vis-à-vis the state in terms of growing advanced manufacturing jobs, and this is from Dixon all the way down to Vallejo. And so these are places like Mango Materials in Vacaville and Earthquake Protection Systems in Vallejo, those kind of jobs where you're using advanced technology to manufacture. Gotham Greens is another great example of a firm that's doing that specifically in the, in the food manufacturing space. The current planning of moving Solano Phase Three is to lean into the agricultural slash food manufacturing history of Solano County and really showcase to the world that that can be done here in Solano County. The hope is, is that then supports farmers on the one end and a bunch of different services on the other and lifts all boats. So we will see how that goes, but the history, at least since 2010, where 2010 was coming out of the Great Recession and really had a wild mix of effects on manufacturing, Solano County really seized up on that and took off, which has been great to see. It should come with more science jobs as well. That's another point of that, is the more advanced manufacturing you have, especially as it's leaning towards scientifically-based goods or goods, that's a good thing in terms of getting those workers here, too. If you look at the jobs.
I apologize. Scientific, give me, give me some sort of a degree or something along those lines.
Yeah, so think of it where you have an engineered product and you're actually having the engineering happening onsite in a small business that then starts to build something that's engineering-based. That's what I mean by that.
Okay.
You can have, the more it looks like that you're a centerpiece of that, the more you might draw in entrepreneurship at that front stage where you have engineering juxtaposed to the marketing, if you want to see it that way.
So, how do you?
Oh, please.
Yeah, how do you train the farmer as a future if we're moving towards that? If I'm a farmer 50 years old and all I do is row crop and trees.
Yep.
Where do I get the schooling to be able to do greenhouses and what that, it's a whole different set of skill sets.
Yeah, and the core, I think, depending on what you intend to do in the greenhouse, might be somewhat similar to, you know, like 65, 70% of it, then it's really organized around and what you do inside an indoor facility and how that changes the cost structure and the nature of the flow during the day. So I think some of that is just simply having certificate programs or things that might be grant-based that you can say, look, if you're a farmer and you're seeing yourself moving towards some kind of greenhouse facility that's relatively medium to large size, come on in and we'll train you. And because you're already coming in with the farm skill basis, it's not like you've got to go from zero to 100, right? You're probably going from 65 or 70 to 100 in terms of making that transition. But I can tell you, I come from a farming family and I think the last thing they're thinking about right now is greenhouse.
Yeah.
So it's hard to know, but we'll see over time. Does that help?
I'm, I'm just thinking of the farming, the farmer mentality. This is the way I've done it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. But I come from a farm family and change is slow. Let's put it that way. So this is the current forecast that's out there from the Department of Finance and Caltrans, which are really the two big ones that the, that the government and all your assembly people and senators are seeing on their desk when they ask for an economic forecast for California. This isn't an industrial, from an industrial standpoint, about 7.4% growth from the end of 2023 to the end of 2030 overall, but if you start looking down the line, and I arranged these, unfortunately, when I saw this graph, I said, I should have arranged this a little bit better. This is going from the bottom, which is going to walk up the ladder from farm to government, from goods-producing farm, construction, manufacturing into services, then toward government. So you see a lot of the black columns moving to the right, which is positive growth, are in those services industries, which, you know, is kind of classic for California, generally speaking, but we have a little bit in manufacturing and construction. For Solano County, the current forecasts are for a little bit, basically, or a little bit, zero growth in construction, manufacturing, still some loss in jobs in farming toward 2030, but some pretty good growth in leisure and hospitality, which is that long red column at the very top. Part of that's seeing Solano County emerging as a residential place and a place for a little bit more tourism, and as that happens, you're going to see some, some rise in hiring in restaurants, event facilities, hotel, et cetera. We will see if that comes to fruition, but that, that growth in leisure hospitality is one of the drivers and why the growth rate in jobs is a little bit larger in Solano County than California for right now. Now, with that said, I have those three arrows by farming, construction, manufacturing on purpose. With this forecast, the supposition is if we lean more economic development resources toward farming, construction, and manufacturing and their sort of mixed way of interacting, we should see more growth across all those industries over time, but we need to get that done. And in the end, we really need to make sure we're helping manufacturing and farming primarily. Construction is something that should have support regionally for a Solano-based construction business over time. Doesn't mean we can, we can forget about them, but manufacturing and agriculture will probably be a little higher threat of either movement some other place or just a slow devolution specifically in agriculture, especially when there's generational change.
Or it moves to its last crop.
Right.
Which are homes.
Right. So, speaking of farmers, this is just a long view of farming returns. Let me just move back one click. This is Solano County. You can see it slipped a little bit in the latest data through 2022 and at 155.2 versus what was true in 2009. So this is an index because California and Solano County are so much different in terms of the aggregate volume in dollars that I indexed both of those to kind of give the relative growth in each rather than the relative size. This is 155.2 is basically where we were in 2014, even though that was kind of a pop from trend, and then the 2010s were kind of a slow time. Some of that's drought and, and the, and the sort of effects of long-term drought. Some of what we've seen in the last two years is the effect of inflation driving commodities prices, and that's also true for California. California agriculture seeing a little bit more of a post-COVID renaissance, I guess if you want to put it that way, than Solano County has, but it doesn't mean that it will continue for the long term in California. There's also a lot of economic development support that needs to happen for farmers across the state. So some things to think about, though, in terms of strategy. The strategy, as I said before, from Solano EDC is to lean a little bit more toward farming through general support for food and beverage manufacturing as well as farm, farm support services. But the three cautions, one is succession planning, got to watch those farm families that are going to have a generational change and what that means. The cost of doing business has increased for farmers, just like any other business, and how much that squeezed an already tight profit margin, that's another decision point. And then the international nature of commodities markets means that as changes happen, as trade policy changes with China, as the Asian economy tries to figure itself out and how we export to Asia, as well as the European economy and how much more competitive they become, farmers here will feel some of that pinch. So we have to keep that in mind, that it's not hyper-local how harvests move, it is an international marketplace. The next stop are social equity metrics, and in 2022, the latest data we have as compared to 2021, we did see a little bit of a sag in inflation-adjusted median household income specifically for African-American households in Solano County. This, this was also true generally around California, that African-American households did not grow median household income as fast as other ethnicities and races, but that's something to monitor, and one of the main reasons that y'all asked me to add this is because we wanted to sort of look at certain social equity metrics that sort of gave a different lens on how groups were evolving within the aggregate, and that gives this poverty and homeownership basically flat in terms of growth in 2022 versus 2021. And as I suggested, those African-American households are the ones that really had the least amount of growth over that last year. But again, there's 18-month lag on those data that we have, unfortunately, those are the latest data. The median wage, as I suggested, has picked up, so that transition from a relatively high inflation situation where from 2022 to 2023, wages changed about two cents after inflation, now between 2023 and 2024, it's about 66 cents more in terms of that increase. That's not a lot, and that's because inflation has still stayed relatively high and as unemployment has crept up a little bit throughout California, but specifically in the North Bay, labor markets are slowing down and as demand slows down, wages tend to slow down in terms of their growth. So that's what we're seeing in terms of how median wages then translate themselves to growth of median household incomes. We should see some, a little bit more of a pickup in inflation-adjusted incomes in 2023 when those data go live, but not a lot. A lot of that's because of inflation flattening from relatively high historic levels.
Hey, Doc.
Yeah, I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, please.
No, that's okay.
Just rambling along here.
No, that's fine. I, I love, I hang on every word.
Oh, wow. Thanks.
In terms of the households that, that are under pressure and you indicate here and that your BIPOC households, do you see this as a bigger picture in terms of kind of losing the middle class? I mean, do you see that as a, as part of that issue and probably those in the middle class that are least supported foundationally, our BIPOC community would be the first to fall?
Yeah, it's, if you think of the middle class as primarily a BIPOC population, yes, but inflation is something that affects everybody.
Right.
It just, it reminds us how nasty inflation is to certain groups. So to your point, whether or not it's a middle class generally, I can't say that because some other groups, for example, our Hispanic households actually picked up a little bit. So it's, it's not, it hasn't generalized itself, but it does remind us that inflation is really nasty for a lot of different groups out there, and it's not gone away. The other thing to think about inflation in terms of affecting things like median household income and the affordability of being anywhere is that it's, it's compounding. So when you hear inflation is now down to 3%, well, that, yeah, that's better than seven, but that's stacked onto seven last year. So it's compounding at a slower rate, but still moving up.
Right.
So if your wages have not kept up, and that's why I wanted to put the median wage growth here to sort of give that, that comparison, that we need median wages and really the wage distribution generally to want to move to the right after inflation rather than stagnate. That's where things get really nasty, when inflation goes up and wages, yeah, I get more on my paycheck, but it's not giving me any more purchasing power.
Right.
That's the critical factor. This just reminds us that purchasing power rising is not necessarily giving, is not really lifting all boats simultaneously, unfortunately.
And that's the challenge of employers, right? Trying to, trying to meet that place, right?
It, it is, and so then if you look at the other side of it, the retention and expansion of your employers depends on the evolution of wages if they want to hire workers, and if they see they want to still operate, but they don't necessarily want to hire the same number of workers, but they want to expand the volume of services or goods they're producing, they move to technology.
Right. I, I do have a follow-up question. You, you broached the topic of AI. I have questions about that, and whenever you're doing your all-day report out on AI, please sign me up. I want to be the first on the list, but, and you got to do it quick because it's coming.
You bet.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got to evolve at the same speed as the technology.
It's here, is what, is really what it is. It's here. I, and I'll just dive in a little bit. I was involved in a regional meeting that CSAC put together to introduce AI, not introduce, but really to show how it can work with governments and government systems. Took a tour of Salesforce, actually got to the 61st floor, pretty cool, but learned a lot about what's, you know, what's coming and how we could use it for good. I think that, you know, there's a scary part to AI, but there's also, you know, a benefit. And I also see how that could affect our employee base, you know, those who actually have jobs and how do they skill up to be able to change or morph the position they're in or the work that they do in order to implement AI into that function. One of the other conversations that, that I'm concerned about is the, the need for electricity to manage AI. I mean, that is a whole nother issue of, you know, where does, we have a hard time getting PG&E to lighten up a manufacturing building or, you know, something new that's actually going to create jobs, let alone catch up with the AI and all the work that's being, that's going to be done through AI. I mean, it's, it's here.
It is here.
We have to embrace it.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so let me know when you have that.
You bet.
Could I head on to that? So how do we begin to manage these disruptors? I mean, technology's going to take away jobs.
Mm-hmm.
So what do you do with the people who, you know, I, I often think about what happened to the, you know, the city of Compton, when Ford left and GM, there was a middle-class community. It is not that today, but nobody cared about the people that didn't have any jobs after those two industries left. So as a government entity, how do we begin to look at that and provide the training for the next skill sets that are needed to put these people to work?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the tricky parts about that is whether or not you're able to attract and retain the types of businesses that would take on those skilled workers or if that is going to happen some other place. That, so you may not retain that population as a result of just having economic development move slower than people's decision-making processes are. That, that's one of the nasty parts about having a, an employer of that size leave a local area. You could say that Vallejo is a good example of that when the Navy left. It, it kind of left a hole that was not filled and you could say the shadow effect remains to this day in some ways around Vallejo. But it doesn't mean that, I can tell you this, is that for my work with Solano EDC, the understanding that that's coming and trying to harness what Solano County can offer, a global environment in terms of businesses that can move here and thrive, that's on in terms of the focus of their energy. It's a competitive marketplace.
But somebody's going to lose.
What's, 100%. That unfortunately, that's the nature of economics. That's why they call it the dismal science. It says that usually there's a winner. I mean, it's very tough to get a positive-sum game every time, very difficult.
So sitting up here as someone who's involved in government, where's my responsibility to that? Having been in the private sector, I understand that, you know, you do what you have to do to stay in business.
Mm-hmm.
In order to keep your employees or, you know, or to grow. But where, where is it's government's responsibility to look at that and say, how do we, how do we, in, in doing that, you disadvantage a whole bunch of people, and now you're going to have, they're going to get, need government services for a while.
Yeah, it's a good question in terms of how much demand there would be for government services and retaining that population if they decide that even with the government services, it's not viable to remain here, and that changes your labor pool. And so you have to think, you know, can, can you support economic and workforce development in such a way that it supports that group, A, not being, or not utilizing government services for a relatively long period of time and also providing more vibrancy to the, the economic situation in the local area and thus jobs? That's, the game is how employers start to look at their total hiring and say, how much more technology do I want to adapt in, at what speed, and does that actually help my bottom line? Because the nasty part of it is, is it's, it's very tough to, to think of anything you could do as a government and actually change the, the core incentives of the way people do business.[1679.86] people do business. So that, that drumbeat's always going to be there for better for worse.
And for us, the county's a safety net.
100%. Sure.
When I started here, it was one in four. It's now one in three.
Yeah. And, and some of that, some of that will be the attractiveness of living here and the, and the fixed incomes, fixed income groups that come here, which is true across the Bay Area over time. It's, it's something that Solano County has to reckon with in terms of how it looks at economic and workforce development. That's the best, best way of saying is that supporting that should at least mitigate the, the natural change, the changes that are naturally coming.
Thank you.
Of course. So if we look at housing forecast, we could have done a lot on housing today, too. Housing markets have slowed, but 2023, just like the macroeconomy, also surprised a lot of economists in terms of what happened with housing prices. I personally expected to have a little flatter year than we did. The last four months or so of the year really saw a little bit of a pickup. Part of it is relatively high interest rates have now kind of set into the market and people are saying, well, I can either continue to pay rent at this level, or I can jump into a mortgage at 7%. God forbid, 7%, right? For those of us that paid 7% in our lifetime for a mortgage, it's not that shocking. But for folks that have had 20 years of, of mortgages that never even sniffed 7%, it's maybe a little more shocking. So for Solano County, price went, it basically was a flat year in Solano County. For the state of California, it went up a little over 3%. But over the last four years, and this is critical, Solano County's median home price is up 27.4%. So is that historically high? No. But it does show you that we've had, at a time where we had a severe recession, housing kind of went the other direction and we missed what in the last three recessions were kind of a follow-on recession in housing, but for the great recession in which housing kind of created the problem. But in the 1990s, in the early 1990s, in 2001, and in 2007 to '09, housing was part of the downhill slide. It avoided it this time, partially because the recession was so fast, but the second is because we put almost everything into place to give people the incentives and the economics to move into a home if they wanted to and had the ability. And that, that's across the California in terms of that change. We had about 1,100, a little over 1,100, 1,100 units, I'm sorry, permitted in last fiscal year. That's a mistake. It should say 22, 23. I apologize for that. The median home price in Solano County by the end of last year was 590,000. So there's thinking about where it was, 27% point, or 27.2% above where it was at the end of 2019. And we're expecting from this graph, you can see it's about 0.6% or more or less flat is the current forecast through early next year. The, it's, a lot of it's supply-driven. If you do not have a lot of supply coming on market, or it's basically as, basically drawn by the same amount as demand, you're going to have no real effect on prices. And that's kind of what's been expected, but that's true last year, too. Basically thought supply and demand would be equal to each other last year. Demand was a little bit higher. It may be the case again, and you can see some other places over there. San Diego County, for example, has seen a little over 50% growth in median home price since the pandemic. So that gives you a, a sense of the relative change we've seen in San Diego County. It's not a small county. Santa Barbara County is about the same growth.
Hey, Doc.
Yes, I'm sorry.
But how much of the increases in homes is because stock, well, I was thinking of the, the stock market folks, the one, the people who have all the stocks. And instead of reinvesting in their company, they now cash out and then they come over and let's say there's a home for 450,000 that you thought you were going to get, but they can come in with cash. I mean, how much has that played in in terms of a change of what the, the, the big, the big people, the people with money, I don't have it obviously, but that kind of a thing? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
It does. It totally makes sense. So there, there's not, what I would say definitive research that equity market values actually drive housing demand per se.
So it's called what now?
Sorry. So when, when the stock market rises, there's really no literature out there that's definitive that says that as the stock market rises, housing prices rise in parallel because people are taking equity gains and moving it into housing. That has happened and we, we know from the data that over history, we've seen movement of equity portfolio move more toward things like REITs and, and other sort of real estate plays in terms of the composition of portfolios. So we know some of that's there, but the data's not totally clear about the decision process of, oh, okay, well, I'm at, I'm, now at this profit point, I'm going to liquidate and move into housing as a natural occurrence. It, it happens more episodically than that, I think. And part of it's because housing has to have the return to attract me as an investor. And it certainly has over the last few years. All cash deals do not necessarily mean you've had equity market gains, so there's another little issue there. But the bottom line is, is that we have, from our real estate professionals, heard that people have come in with cash instead of having to need them or having to have a mortgage to get the job done. And what that does, it makes you a little bit less interest rate sensitive in terms of demanding a home or not. So the logic is there to suggest that if I had my money in the stock market, which not everybody participates in the stock market, by the way, and that can lead to a larger split in the types of people who can afford homes and who cannot, that, we know that some of that has happened in terms of people taking equity gains and moving in. We, I can't give you a percentage and say that this is, 45% of the market was because of equity market gains. Nobody can give you that number precisely. Logic suggests that some of that has to be in, in play. Great, thank you. Solano EDC also asked me to talk about multifamily units. And so if you look at the latest surveys coming out of Census and Department of Finance, I'm going to show you briefly, this is in 2010, the mix of single-family, or sorry, of housing units in these comparison areas where Solano County is on the far left-hand side, the percent that are multifamily. Then 2019, right before the pandemic, and then what we've seen since then. So you'll notice that the percentage of multifamily units in Solano County is relatively lower than other places. The SAC, SAC, Sacramento Metropolitan Area is about the same, but it's, and it's fallen a little bit because we've seen a little bit more single-family home development in Sacramento and Yolo and Placer and El Dorado Counties, which is the amalgam that makes up the Sacramento MSA. The North Bay's, we've seen a little bit of a creep up. A lot of that is because if you look at fire recovery areas and specifically Sonoma County and Napa County, to rebuild units, they have not necessarily rebuilt single-family homes. They've rebuilt multifamily homes to re-engage a certain number of housing units. Sonoma County specifically is still below the housing unit, a single-family housing unit total they were in 2017. Because of the fires, they have not fully rebuilt. They have more total housing units, fewer single-family. So some of that is the North Bay creep there in terms of multifamily units. But we always think of housing as an attraction and, and if you talk to your employers, they'll talk about either, well, I shouldn't say that. They'll, they'll talk about housing mix as being one of the pivotal things that they get in discussions with, with potential employees and whether or not there is a mix there for them to go from rental to homeownership or to go right in at a certain level. If you talk to your hospitals, for example, the retention of, of physicians is one of the classic poster children that gets thrown up there, that this is why I can't retain doctors because we don't have enough 10,000 square foot estates, which is kind of a sad generalization that I've heard a lot, unfortunately. But it does suggest that, that hospitals are hearing that out of physicians, that there's, the homes are just not available for what they see as their lifestyle and thus they're, they're not retained. And that's, that's been true across the region, not just in the North Bay.
Do we risk losing doctors and not attracting doctors? I mean, that's a whole nother issue.
You do. And, and it's kind of an indirect issue.
Right.
Because if you pay me a million dollars, I'll probably live in 5,000 square feet. But there, we, I have heard stories from hospitals and HR divisions in households that the marginal decision for a medical doctor to stay in the area was the lack of housing at the level they wanted to see it.
Supervisor Sperring used to talk about that in terms of, you know, we can't just build affordable housing. We can't just build, you know, median income housing. We also have to build high-end housing because of, because you move people then into that and there is a demand for it. Thank you.
Yeah. And, and really it's thinking about your industrial mix and your housing mix as sort of hand-in-hand partners for economic, community and workforce development. They're, they're really two of the most solid legs of the community development school, stool. So you have to think about how they're going to walk hand-in-hand. And, you know, Solano County has, for better for worse, leaned more towards single-family housing over time. If we look at population change, this is fiscal year change. In the calendar year change, it just came out about four or five weeks ago from Department of Finance, Solano County actually saw an increase in population. I said that off the top. It hadn't quite got there in the fiscal year. I just want to show you this real quickly. That's the number of babies that were born over those fiscal years. That's the number of people passed on. This is folks that came in net from outside the country towards Solano County versus what Solano County sent away to other countries. And the purple are net migrations around the United States, inclusive of Yolo County versus Solano County. But you can see that on the far right-hand side, which are the last three fiscal years, the purple columns are negative and relatively large. And that really drove the net change in population down after the pandemic really seized up the economy, but we've seen it creep back up. And like I said, the current population estimate is that we have in fact recovered population, I'll just take that back, that's bad. We actually, I saw a population increase the last calendar year, but Solano County is still negative, about 6,000 people from where it was right before the pandemic. That's also not unique. The North Bay is down. And then I had the data here at the end that tells us the, the Bay Area story. So hold on for that.
So do we look at that, those folks that are moving away? Are they retirees who are now taking a fairly good pension and, and gone someplace else?
Thank you for that question. It is, the data are just slowly emerging as to the type of households that have moved. It, it's a real mix of people that move toward tax havens, where you don't have to pay any sales income, or state income tax, for example. To workers that went places where they basically had demand for their skills and better cost of living. And, and you've seen sort of working families and retirees all move. And it's been this wild mix of, of people all over the place. And in fact, what we're seeing is we're seeing kind of a remigration back to California to a certain extent. And we don't know how much of that is political, how much it is that people are expecting the California labor market to start providing more returns, a flatter growth of housing. Those data will emerge and you're never going to really know with pure precision because there are no surveys out there that basically say this is why people came back, came back en masse in any way, shape or form around California.
Supervisor Hannigan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, that's all right, Doctor. I'm always good information. Tell me about the trend for the low birth rates or the reducing birth rates. Like what, what does that lead to in terms of outcomes? And I mean, I'd hate to be like China and say, okay, now you got to start producing babies. Oh, no, now you got to stop because we got too many. I mean, like where, where is, where, where does that land, if you will? I know it affects obviously our workforce. It affects our ability to continue to put money into Social Security to support those who have retired. But, but let me, tell us what, how do our reduction in birth rates, what does that look like as a trend, both locally or regionally and nationally?
Yeah, so for Solano County, if you look at the nine-county Bay Area, Solano County actually has a better forecast in terms of population growth, which means the birth rates will probably pick up a little bit over the next, let's say, 15 years. But the effects of a lower birth rate or fewer kids here will be shown in fewer K-12 attendants, so you're going to have fewer kids in school. Thus, you'll have fewer high school graduates. You'll have fewer entrants into the labor market that are indigenous to the local area. You'll have, at least at the macro level, you have, if you think about the US and slower birth rates, is you'll have less people that are able to, or fewer people that are able to support those that are already in Social Security. So Social Security and Medicare, that drumbeat's running around Congress and has been for decades. Economists have been talking about it for decades. Now it seems like it's slowly starting to show its face. We will see how it plays. But the, the warning has been there in terms of the actuarial tables that Social Security and Medicare are going to be under threat. Big liquidity threats in the early 2030s, and a lot of that's because of population change. Those are kind of the big ones. So you nailed it otherwise. And so you have labor force effects, you'll have effects on your schools, and you'll have effects on how you support an aging community otherwise. So the population's a little over 446,000 as of the beginning of the year, still a little over 6,000 people below where we ended 2019. We just talked about the implications and then we have the attendance and grad rates. So moving forward, inflation is slowly marching down. The supposition that interest rates are going to also start to move down is now this like weird shell game that financial markets are playing with the Federal Reserve. We will see if in fact we have one rate cut this year. A lot of that is going to depend on the inflation data and its evolution continuing to move down. The more flat that is, the less likely we will see interest rates change in, in 2024, more likely 2025. But it's all an inflation game now. And that's a global issue. We have seen some central banks around the world cut rates because they feel like the job is done. But right now, the Federal Reserve does not feel that's the case. As we talked about, housing and economic development are kind of hand-in-glove partners in terms of community development. So where Solano County goes with its housing mix and its industry mix should be seen as linked partners in terms of that conversation continuing and making sure that employers and developers and local government are all walking in the same, same direction. You should expect a lot more economic development action from Dixon down to Benicia and really the centerpieces, I believe, are going to be in Vallejo and Vacaville with Fairfield also moving forward, but maybe not at the same speed as Vacaville and Vallejo but moving forward. But expect a lot of action over the next few years, especially based on what Solano County or Solano EDC has been doing. We just need to get to November 6th in many ways. So the, the cloud of what, of uncertainty in elections has been something, especially in, well, in, in modern history, it, whenever you've had a contested election, if you look back, or one in which you're just not sure what the outcome's going to be, the economy gets a little weird. So September and October, you might see a lot more volatility, specifically in our financial markets, if any uncertainty remains in the outcome. And we should expect that uncertainty remain. But I feel like that we just need to get the air out of the balloon on November 6th and kind of hopefully move on, but it'll be very intriguing to see what happens. In terms of where we're going to be in 2030, so right now, the forecast is for about 157,000 people to be working for local employers here in Solano County by 2030. A lot of that depends on economic development and whether or not we're actually able to exceed that. But that's the growth we saw before. That's actually coming in fruition from the latest numbers. We'll have about just under 460,000 residents, which is up about 13,000. So that would fully recover and beyond where we saw in the loss in the pandemic. We'll see if that plays. The trend is headed that direction. But at the bottom, I say industrial mix, housing units and labor force are TBD because we don't know what the industrial mix will be. That depends on economic, community development. The housing mix the same and the composition of our labor force the same. Those things need to be determined by the above. So with that, I'll take any questions you have and thanks again for this work.
So, Doc.
Yeah. Please.
We can, we can put all these plans together and you can give us all this information, but who are the drivers of the driving that are going to drive these things? Is it the local electeds? Is it the industry? Is it a combination of that? Is it government?
I, I think, I've always thought about it as you have economic development professionals that need to be kind of the tip. And what government needs to be is a partner in that, recognizing the, the community effects of, of the decisions you make. Workforce development, like Solano Community College, to a certain extent, we will see what happens with Cal Maritime in terms of the evolution of it. If Cal Poly ends up, which looks like to be the case, actually absorbing them, that might actually impute more resources into Cal Maritime and look at expanding what is offered there in terms of additional workforce development, places like Toro University, the partnerships with UC Davis and it moving west. I think a lot of that.
It'd be nice for them to move west.
Well, and even, even UC Berkeley, sort of looking at Solano County, depending on the industrial mix and the science that's happening here, you will get talent magnetized toward this area the more you are showcasing that this is a place to come. So it's really a lot of, and I hate to say this because I'm not even, I'm not even, want to put myself out there as a communications expert, you can just see by the last two sentences I tried to speak, that the, you really need to communicate why this is a unique place that's positive for business and for workers, right? Not or for workers, but and for workers. The or for workers is sort of what Solano County's history has been, a place that people have come because the quality of life's really high and they've gone out and worked somewhere in another place and brought those incomes home. I think where the sort of, I don't want to say the utopian aspect of it is, but really kind of where the optimization takes place is where you can really drive industrial choice and employment choice in the same place and utilize who lives where you want to operate your business. So that, that to me is, government is a partner in driving that outcome, that's really the best thing you can do. At the end of the day, at least that's my basic vision, and let the economic development professionals do their work knowing you're a partner behind.
But what I don't see are the champions.
So economic development professionals are meant to be those champions. Now, and if they're, if they're not obvious champions, then that's a problem. But they should be. I mean, that's kind of their, their everyday business is to be that champion in communicating why this is, should be top of the wall.
Well, maybe that's what lacking is, the communication.
It could be, and maybe, and maybe what you just, you don't know what you don't know.
Yeah. Thank you.
Of course.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when you mentioned Solano Community College, I'm really grateful that we have a really good relationship with Sonoma State and the partnerships that have happened.
Yes.
Because I love your little state university. It's really cute.
Oh, yeah.
So, well, it is, it is, but my son decided to be a Gator, but that's where it goes. But I really think from everything that I've heard that we'll be able to have San Luis Obispo and be a Cal Poly, because you can see what's happened with Humboldt. Once they became a Cal Poly, it seems like they've gotten more students to attend there. And it also brings forward the engineering that we need based on the notes that I made too. So, I'm looking forward to that November vote. I think it should go through.
Yeah, I mean, I feel pretty confident it's going to. The key is what happens on the other side in terms of the inbound investment, how the community really grabs those resources and puts them more obviously into Solano County.
Yeah.
That'll be where a lot of y'all's work is going to also kick, because once you see that happen and how much you can harness that in Solano County proper is the key.
I would agree.
Supervisor Hannigan, ma'am.
And to that point, that's always been my concern, that, you know, Cal Maritime, well, it's this beautiful resource that is so close, they're still so far from the residents that live there, and bringing kids from the schools in Vallejo or anywhere in Solano County, but I'm going to focus on Vallejo because that's my city, onto the campus, and giving them those opportunities is going, is really the key, because that's, raising all boats is going to raise the county. So, I'm optimistic about it as well. I think it's a good thing for both organizations. And I really want to thank you for coming and just giving us the nuts and bolts of what's happening in the economy.
Sure.
As much as we want to, you know, be at the top and be better and be in that place, I think it's important for us to know exactly where we are and to identify the work we're going to need to do to get to those places, because our community is relying on us to do this good work, whether it's here at Solano EDC or, you know, within any other organization that is supporting employees here in the county. So, thank you so much.
You bet. Thank you.
And Doc, I haven't really had a lot of questions today, but I did appreciate the presentation, and I did get a couple of key things from this, and I think the first is that we as a board and as policymakers, especially with regards to housing and some other issues like that, need to look at, we sat down and we, a couple of years ago, and formulated some goals and some objectives for this board, and we need to revisit that and look at that, and look at how the potential policies that we're going to be considering in the next couple of years can lend themselves to spurring some of that growth that needs to occur and how we can make it easier. Sometimes government just needs to get out of the way. The other thing that it brings to mind for me, though, is that we also need to look at ways that we as a county are going to be able to change how we do business as an entity that provides service, but also the ways that this county generates its general fund and general fund income, because we've heard that there's going to be a population that we're going to have to support. There's going to be a population that's going to be displaced from the workforce, I guess for lack of a better term, and that is going to need, whether it's temporary support or ongoing support, they're going to need some support. And right now, we as a county don't have the means to do that. We're hanging on by our fingernails every time the state creates some other unfunded mandate. You guys knew I was going to bring that up, right? I got to every meeting. Right. So, you know, we're hanging on by our fingernails, and the state keeps generating these, and so, you know, we're barely keeping our head above water. If that kind of demand is generated between now and 2030 or 2035, we're going to have to figure out a way to get there so that we can provide that and be that safety net for our citizens. So, those were my comments on this, and so, I'm appreciative of your report and bringing that to light for us, and we'll be moving forward, looking at those things, if I have anything to say about it. And Supervisor Brown, you have?
One of these years, I'm going to be taking classes and bugging him as a student. Are we going to hear from EDC? Because Dr. Eiler talked about they're coming up with all of these ideas, but I haven't heard anything. Is there a way, it just happens, you happen to be sitting right there. I'm just kind of looking at staff. Are we thinking of, because it doesn't do me any good to hear and to hear what the doctor indicated, but yet I don't know what EDC is doing. I feel like I'm missing something. So, I'm just, I mean, I don't know.
Solano EDC has been before to talk about.
But, but, but I would like-
And then Dr. Eiler's-
I would like to have an update.
-prior to do a macro-
Yep, I know.
...version of it, so.
And we can certainly talk with EDC and talk about a presentation.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, we can certainly have that discussion. We've had some discussions with Chris recently about more communications with the county, so we can follow up.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Doc. That's everything from everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, with that, that brings us to item 39, which is closed session. Yeah, we absolutely should. Are we going to have anything to report out, counsel? No? Okay. Any board member comments or adjournments?
Yeah, I want to do this here.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to do this later. Thank you. Let me get to them. Okay, I do have an adjournment in memory of, and I did want to talk about the regional meeting, and I just found this out, this is so sad. So, Susie Connolly passed away on June 22nd, surrounded by her family, which includes her husband, three children, her mom, her sister. She fought for her life to overcome a blood clot from her leg that traveled to her heart. I've known Susie forever. Our children have been in class together for a long time. She was very involved in the Vallejo community and a business owner. The Connolly family recently shared the upcoming birth of their first grandson. She was also a seroptimist, a seroptimist sister of mine, and will be greatly missed by family and her many close friends. But I talked about it a little bit, and that was the CSAC Regional Conference that took place this week, this last week around AI, and, you know, CSAC is stepping in hard into AI. I think that it's really important to educate electeds as well as staff on what artificial intelligence is and how it can, how it can help our organizations, how there are programs that can insulate, you know, that important information, and yet still provide support for our employees communicating outside and for our, for our customers who are utilizing our systems. We were given a tour of Salesforce Tower. It was pretty incredible, but part of that tour was having a conversation around a simulation, if you will, and that was a single mom who's looking for some financial assistance could fill out a form, and most of that form could be filled out from information that we may have had on her prior, and then they would put in new information like income, or maybe they've changed their address, and what her current needs are in terms of she's had a baby since the last time we've had a conversation with her, et cetera. So, they would put in that information, and then it would come up, what, if they entered that all in, the system would come up with what services and programs this mom is eligible for, and they could check all the boxes or just a couple of the boxes, and then send that information back out. Again, this is AI pulling information from all different locations, including a layer of trusted and confidential information, and then that information goes to a social worker who would review what was, what was filled out on the form, who would be able to contact the applicant, in this case, a single mom, and verify the information with her, approve or disapprove of her being eligible for the programs and services that the system said she was eligible for, and then essentially click a button, and it goes to accounting, and a check rolls out, and they're taken care of. This is obviously something that's going to happen in the future. I thought it was very exciting, particularly from the point of the, our constituent who would be filling out this form. One of the problems with our constituencies, the one and three, is they have to fill out multiple forms, they have to tell their information multiple times, and there isn't a repository of information that continues. I found that to be very fascinating. I can totally see where, one, we're retaining our employees, but two, we're making it easier for our constituents. That's one example of many that are coming down with AI, and I would encourage my board members to plea, and employees to, you know, take whatever classes you can through CSAC to learn more about AI, its application in government, how it could fit within our operation here in Solano County, but it was very exciting. You're all are able to go to these regional meetings. This was just one of many that, that, actually, one that I could actually attend, because it fit within my schedule. So, very exciting. I'm going to have follow-up conversations with Tim. I know he's already talked to us a little bit about AI, but I think there's a bigger thing coming. One of them is actually, I believe, arriving to our own desktops in September, and that's a program through Microsoft called Copilot. And Copilot is available out in the world for others, but not for businesses just yet. September, I think, is when that happens. And that will assist you all in identifying, you know, what's more important on your to-do list to tackle earlier versus later, summarizing emails, putting together responses for you that you can then, you know, set the tone, put your own flavor on it, and send them out. So, it's a tool. It will be a tool that will help. So, wanted to share that information with all of you. It was very exciting. That's all I have.
Supervisor Brown.
Nothing to ask you, sir.
And I have nothing either. So, with that, we will recess until-
Does she need to read it?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. Madam Clerk, please.
Then we'll recess.
Then we'll recess.
Conference with Labor Negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Solano County Representatives, Director of Human Resources, Nigel Edwards, County Administrator, Bill Emlyn, Assistant County Administrator, Debbie Vaughn, and Assistant County Administrator, Ian Goldberg, and employee organizations as various units.
All right. Thank you. So, we will recess until 2:00 P.M. today. Thank you, everybody.[1104.83]
We got a little bit of time, yeah?
I'll follow me. I want to.
So we're not gonna be in the mic jacks?
Unfortunately not here.
Okay.
No, that is not wrong. And then it gradually goes out, boy. And then it gets into fifty-fifty. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, maybe go right.
I mean, I took me out good in high school, but then, you know, you don't do it.
Right.
Yeah. So I was at a grocery store, so I used it a little bit, but I mean...
I think it'll be okay, but let me take some space with some friends and see what I can get. Kate, do you have anybody who's into immersion? I don't think so, we've been out of it, but I'll find somebody. Because it's bingo a little soon now. They kept moving it around.
My neighbors were...
You can get when they were doing that, yeah. So I'll find them. Because Ana Patera's on the board, so she would know somebody. I think the teacher there will figure it out. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
It sounds like it'd be great.
I think it'll be a good program. Did your friends like it when they were reading to...
Loved it.
Yeah. Because see, my daughter just got her PhD in Spanish. And we didn't have dual immersion in Salinas, so she can take classes for free. You have to pay for the book with an under eighteen of college. So I did just drop her Spanish. What pissed me off was that I did some personal classes with a teacher.
I was sort of thinking something that was gonna work. I was thinking backwards. The other thing is I could just mic the public comment. That's kind of the real attitude.
So, Jenrick, do not run into this. You're fine, you're fine, you're fine. So, or the media folks?
And that would pick up.
I just was so happy that Jenrick had friends, so I...
Oh, yeah. I know, I'm happy talking stuff that we all know about. I'm thinking, instead of making this more complicated... Oh, there's no such law of... Put a law, quite small, right there. You could really just... I take the flag off.
Oh, true.
That's where all this...
Okay.
So, that's good. Yes.
Yeah. Actually, I thought so. Um, I'm Mark.
Should I just do it and that can go?
Jenrick?
Yes.
It's not... So I know Jenrick takes...
They don't sit down here?
He's like...
Yes, he did. I thought I could sound like shots there. Like various things. Well, I do bring that sign. This was something else.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, it is boring.
Keeps pushing my radio buttons. Oh, that one?
Yep.
I could use this one if this... Okay. So we don't have to drag it down snar? Huh? No, no, it's only county council and the CIA. Thank you. And if that one bothers you, we can try and pull... Oh, no, that was just a little narrow, and so my radio keeps changing channels, everything. I tried to... so...
As a person... As fun as listening to...
Yeah, that's right. Plus this?
Yeah.
Because you got there first.
Thank you. Ten inches went to lots of love. And wait, that's why it's short and long. Probably would not be... I... I guess...
Really bad. Something a little bad. It was kind of fucked, yeah.
This is a Todd section?
Let's say Todd.
No, it says, "Don't feed the staff."
No sign of law in here.
Exactly. Go through that town.
Good.
Historical.
It's exciting.